Which would be used for filling the sweeper, vector, fire hydrant flushing, along with running them out of contractors' requests using the fire hydrants. Currently, we own one water meter with a backflow setup, and that's being used right now at the high school. The other water meter will be used by the fire department when they are training. Having and using these meters will aid us in tracking the water usage, which was un-metered before. Last week, I talked with Benesh on using these meters for this purpose, and he agreed it would be a great practice to do. And they did review this here, these meters, and they don't see an issue with them. So, recommend USA Blue Book for three water meters, two hydro backflow preventers.
All right. So, council motion would be in your court to approve USA Blue Book for the meters and backflow preventers described in your packet.
I'll make that a motion.
A motion by McNabb. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, my owner. My thoughts, I think John put this in front of Benesh per the previous discussion, because we want to stop playing whack-a-mole with meters and make sure we have a systematic inventory. So, just John, thank you for bringing that up. I know some of these applications are incredibly important, like for our amazing fire department, the training and making sure that we have meters that can assess that water, especially given the volume of usage. Obviously, more considerations to be discussed there, but as one case example. So, John, just thank you for putting in front of our experts. I personally heard them comment on the pricing in a positive direction.
Yes.
I want to make sure we're doing this intentionally and systematically, which is why we have the broader meter evaluation by Benesh to be had. Treasure Fontaine, I know you're part of this meeting. Is that accurately kind of summarizing where we're at? Anything else you'd add here?
No, they, Benesh even offered another suggestion to John, but they both arrived at the USA Blue Book meters as being.
Yeah.
Cool. Awesome. Any discussion further on this matter? Clerk Tomasic will have you call roll whenever you're ready.
Cox.
Yes.
McNabb.
Yes.
Mulner.
Yes.
Schumate.
Yes.
Valentine.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Cox.
Yes.
Motion carried. Back to you for wayfinding sign refurbishment.
All right. The next one, next item is a request to, for wayfinding signs throughout the city to refurbish them. That was one item that we'd had on the DDA bond list. It was on the wayfinding signs. I was able to find one company that specializes in refurbishing these signs, Copeland Refurbishing Company out of Newport. Cost to refurbish the 12 existing signs is $6,915. With them being a small business, they asked for a $2,000 deposit upon acceptance of the quote. So, basically, it's all the signs, the wayfinding signs we have, the welcome to Gibraltar, signs at the park, and emblem upon the community center. My recommendation, if we elect to do this work, that we use this company.
I'll make the motion to proceed.
Motion from Mulner to support the Copeland refurbishing, refurbishing 12 existing signs in the amount of $6,915. Is there a second for that motion? Second by Valentine.
I think we did the first one over here already.
We did that one, and we, cemetery.
Okay. And you did, the guys did those internally.
Yeah, we did that with our, with Ellen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think they, they make a huge difference turning on to Bayview from there.
Yeah.
I think that, I haven't seen the one at the cemetery, but refurbishing the signs is, it's a sign of good things.
Yeah.
Yeah, and shout out to Ellen, who did a phenomenal job on the two that were tackled internally. Any further discussion on this matter?
I have a question.
Question.
I think I had mentioned to you before that there's a large sign that's at the DPW. Is that one also going to be fixed to be able to set out, or, okay? And then, so are you going to put that up by Breland and replace that small sign and put the small sign by Ford?
We've got another small sign.
Pardon?
We have another small sign.
Okay.
That was going down Middle Gibb.
And Ford?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So, the big sign can go by Breland?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, just wanted to check, make sure.
Any other discussion on this matter? I'm assuming from a financial perspective, my only thought was around the DDA bond opportunity for funding this versus other budget.
Well, it was in our, it was, it was in there.
Cool. Got it. All right. Any other discussion? Clerk Tomasic will have you call roll whenever you're ready.
McNabb.
Yes.
Mulner.
Yes.
Schumate.
Yes.
Valentine.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Cox.
Yes.
Motion carried. John, back to you for asphalt repairs.
Next item on the list is recommendation for Al's asphalt paving, make asphalt repairs at water main repair, repairs to the road at, where we had water main breaks. These repairs been accumulating over the past three years, and I have one road repair on Blakely where it enters Island Estates. This work would be a change order to Al's existing contract for City Hall Community Center work. Right now, I'm at $41,513, and I've attached all the areas where we're doing paving, asphalt. They're all highlighted.
Counsel, the motion request is for $41,513 for asphalt repairs per John's recommendation.
I'll make the motion to approve Al's asphalt to proceed with these repairs in the amount of $41,513 and zero cents.
Second.
Second by Cox. Council discussion on this matter?
Do we have three bids on these things?
Al's was our low contractor for the asphalt.
Parking lot.
In the parking lot. He had very good prices on that. So, and this is all piecemeal work, so I don't think we'd get a better price than this.
This is scattered all over the town. I reviewed the costs associated with the prices that were submitted. They're fair, especially in today's costs.
Yep.
And as John stated, we haven't touched any repairs in three years, so.
Well overdue.
Well overdue, and we need to get to work on it, absolutely.
Does this include the, the section back in the Island View sub where there was, where they spray painted off section?
As you drive in.
Not as you drive in, it's back further.
Oh, back in the, where it's concrete?
Yeah.
That's on the other list.
Okay.
That I'm working on. I'm working on the concrete repairs.
Got it. Okay. All right.
Any further discussion on this matter? Clerk Tomasic will have you call roll whenever you're ready.
Mulner.
Yes.
Schumate.
Yes.
Valentine.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Cox.
Yes.
McNabb.
Yes.
Mulner.
Motion carried. Back to you for item I, and then you have J last.
All right. DP, I got before you, purchase ear protection, and it's wireless headsets from JDC. They're the people I think we bought the vector truck from, for $1,750. These will provide ear protection and the ability to communicate with each other when using the vector truck, bucket truck, trimming trees, cutting down, cutting down trees with the wood chipper. A minimum of three headsets are needed, but they are sold in pairs only, so that's why we have to buy two sets. Each set is $850. Because when you're using the vector truck, there's a lot of hand signals going on, hand signals and yelling.
Counsel, motion would be in your court.
Make the motion to purchase two, two pairs of the headsets from JDC, $1,750.
Counsel, is there a second for that motion?
I'll second that. That's, it's a safety, it's a safety issue, too.
All right. So, John, you got a motion and a second. Counsel, any discussion on this matter?
Yes.
Yeah.
Have we pursued any other headsets throughout, maybe electronic or a headset specialist? Because Dohany sells vector trucks. They don't sell headsets.
Well, he was.
That's why I'm concerned with.
They were out at the, when the guys went to Expo. They tried them out there. You know? I'm sure if Dohany's selling them, they gotta be fairly good for being around a vector truck.
I think Councilman Cox's point is important, though, right? Because we're just operating off one.
Well, I can see if there's somebody else.
I would suggest we do some more research to make sure we're doing the right. And even like, right now, we're getting limited or kind of handcuffed, if you will, because it's making you purchase two pairs when we need three, right? So, we can't buy three, so we're now being cornered into four. Just a thought. I think Councilman Cox knows this lane quite well in his professional capacity, and I think might say there might be some other parties that could source for us here.
I think there might be viable sources where we get a reduced rate than what we're seeing right now.
Can, can I add, Chief Buller?
Yes.
What's the company doing, our, our new cameras?
Actron Systems.
Actron. Do you think they sell products like that, or can you check with them?
Yeah, I can reach out to them.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I think, John, I think if we could just look into it further, just to make sure, because I think you're hearing like Councilman McNabb saying, you know, it's important for operation or safety considerations, but.
I definitely want our employees to have hearing protection. I'm not, I, I just think there might be a better avenue with lesser cost than what we're seeing.
I think you have conceptual support for the purchase. You just need to get maybe a little more detail on the vendor options.
Look around, see what else is available.
Do we want to vote on the motion to, obviously, make sure we accommodate this here?
Well, either I can withdraw. Withdraw. I'm happy to withdraw my motion.
Would you support a withdrawal to those in the second?
Oh, we need art, art.
Yes, I withdraw my second.
Okay, so perhaps we withdraw this motion for the.
Further review.
For the review of further information in a future form. You go with that direction, John?
Yep.
Cool. Now, you get to go to item J, since that motion has been withdrawn.
This here motion is to purchase street and traffic signs. Motion to approve the purchase of 40th Street signs, traffic signs and signposts for $2,425.84 from Eco Signs. That's where we've bought the signs in the past. Purchases to replace some existing street signs that are faded out or are damaged, and to replace the sign and post inventories that we, that we have on hand. We also got signs ordered for, over at the Cook Center Basketball Skate Park, with park hours and no alcohol allowed, and traffic signs for replacement of the Chevron directional signs on South Gibraltar Road. New signs are reflective, which the state will be requiring in the future.
All right, Counsel, you got a motion in your court to approve the purchase of 40th Street name signs and 10 signposts bases, and bases for $2,425.84 from Econo Signs. Do we have a motion? Do we have a motion, Counsel? I'm not.
Make that motion.
Okay, there we go. Councilman Cox made a motion.
Second.
Second by Wood. Counsel discussion on this matter?
Are we accurate on the inventory that we, I mean, this is, okay.
Well, on, on the backup here, are the names of streets where, signs were by, in the quantities?
I got a hard copy in case anybody doesn't have it handy virtually. Are we accurate on the inventory? Any other discussion on this matter? Clerk Tomasic will have you call roll whenever you're ready.
Wood.
Yes.
Cox.
Yes.
McNabb.
Yes.
Mulner.
Yes.
Schumate.
Yes.
Valentine.
Yes.
Motion carried. Anything else in your court, John?
That's it for this week.
Treasure Fontaine, I had a note from you and I in our discussion, because we had this, I think, at a Department of Meeting. Shout out again to Councilman McNabb on the roof stuff, because if I recall, this process has prevailed over some time, and in this process, because of the research and exhaustive work of Councilman McNabb, we also landed with quite a savings. And if I recall, I think it was in order about $40,000.
Correct.
So, big shout out. It's a lot of money, and.
Buy a lot of plywood with that.
So, yeah, you, you got a lot of, you got a lot of plywood purchase potential. But, yeah, just wanted to make sure everybody's aware that this process and its methodical detail led to about 40 grand in savings.
I want to add, it was part of the Infrastructure Committee, where all this was brought out, and it was decided at that time to hold on that RFP until further investigation would lead us to where we're at today, so.
Yeah, we were going to just do a repair, and I think we were putting fingers in the dam.
Yeah, that's serious money.
That's serious money. Yes, well said. So, thank you for that savings realization. All right. Any questions for John? Clerk Tomasic, floor is yours.
Thank you. I have two updates since our last meeting. As you know, we broadcast, live stream all our meetings on cable and Facebook Live. Facebook recently changed its video policy, and they now only save our live recordings for 30 days. So, to make sure our residents still have full access to past and future meetings, City of Gibraltar has launched a new YouTube channel, where all the meetings will be saved for future viewing. You can find that YouTube channel on our city website. There's a little YouTube icon at the top and bottom of our homepage, or you can see those meetings through our Agendas and Minutes portal, also on the website. We will continue to live stream our meetings, live stream our meetings on Facebook as well as cable, but just once the meetings end, those recordings are going to be archived on, on YouTube. Got a few years' worth of meetings to upload to YouTube, so just be patient as I get them all uploaded on there.
I want to give a huge shout to Clerk Tomasic, proactive in making sure we're set up for success there, so just thank you for doing that and for making the community aware of it. Appreciate it a lot.
Thank you. My second update, at our last city council meeting, a request was made for the city to publish candidate biographies for local elections in our newsletter and on the city website. Completely understand and respect that residents want to be informed with making their voting decisions. However, after, after doing some research in Michigan election law and the Campaign Finance Act, both myself and the city attorney, we agreed and came to the conclusion that the city should not distribute or promote candidate information. As a public body, we have a responsibility to remain neutral and avoid even the appearance of bias, because perception matters, and we want residents to have complete confidence that the city does not attempt to influence, influence voters for or against any candidate, and we're committed to conducting fair elections. In addition to Michigan's Campaign Finance Act, which prohibits the use of public resources for campaign-related purposes, there's also restrictions under Michigan's election law that prevents campaigning in polling locations, and that would include City Hall during the 40-day, 40-day absentee period before an election. So, since the city newsletter is made available at our front counter, including candidate information, and that could unintentionally create an election law violation, violation, we don't want that. So, again, I know how important it is for residents to have the information they need to make their voting choices. However, the responsibility to share the candidate information rests with candidates themselves, and the voters seeking those resources. So, I just want to thank everyone for being understanding, as we continue to work to ensure fairness, transparency, and compliance with election law.
Thank you so much, Katie. Appreciate all the work you did to land that, and great to see the turnout in this upcoming November election from a ballot perspective, so encourage every candidate to get their own information out as they see fit. Any questions for Clerk Tomasic? Treasure Fontaine, floor is yours.
Thank you.
I have two updates since our last meeting. As you know, we broadcast, live stream all our meetings on cable and Facebook Live. Facebook recently changed its video policy, and they now only save our live recordings for 30 days. So, to make sure our residents still have full access to past and future meetings, City of Gibraltar has launched a new YouTube channel, where all the meetings will be saved for future viewing. You can find that YouTube channel on our city website. There's a little YouTube icon at the top and bottom of our homepage, or you can see those meetings through our Agendas and Minutes portal, also on the website. We will continue to live stream our meetings, live stream our meetings on Facebook as well as cable, but just once the meetings end, those recordings are going to be archived on, on YouTube. Got a few years' worth of meetings to upload to YouTube, so just be patient as I get them all uploaded on there.
I want to give a huge shout to Clerk Tomasic, proactive in making sure we're set up for success there, so just thank you for doing that and for making the community aware of it. Appreciate it a lot.
Thank you. My second update, at our last city council meeting, a request was made for the city to publish candidate biographies for local elections in our newsletter and on the city website. Completely understand and respect that residents want to be informed with making their voting decisions. However, after, after doing some research in Michigan election law and the Campaign Finance Act, both myself and the city attorney, we agreed and came to the conclusion that the city should not distribute or promote candidate information. As a public body, we have a responsibility to remain neutral and avoid even the appearance of bias, because perception matters, and we want residents to have complete confidence that the city does not attempt to influence, influence voters for or against any candidate, and we're committed to conducting fair elections. In addition to Michigan's Campaign Finance Act, which prohibits the use of public resources for campaign-related purposes, there's also restrictions under Michigan's election law that prevents campaigning in polling locations, and that would include City Hall during the 40-day, 40-day absentee period before an election. So, since the city newsletter is made available at our front counter, including candidate information, and that could unintentionally create an election law violation, violation, we don't want that. So, again, I know how important it is for residents to have the information they need to make their voting choices. However, the responsibility to share the candidate information rests with candidates themselves, and the voters seeking those resources. So, I just want to thank everyone for being understanding, as we continue to work to ensure fairness, transparency, and compliance with election law.
Thank you so much, Katie. Appreciate all the work you did to land that, and great to see the turnout in this upcoming November election from a ballot perspective, so encourage every candidate to get their own information out as they see fit. Any questions for Clerk Tomasic? Treasure Fontaine, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, as you know, we're, we're entering into a contract with AEW, so last week I reported that we should be quick about issuing an RFP. So, we had the office dig for the last RFP. We've got that on a PDF. I've got that now on a Word document to where we can amend it and get it out quickly. But I'd like to run this by the Infrastructure Committee for their take on it, you know, what we should add or delete from it, make it as streamlined as we can, and look for the creativity of these engineers to propose better pricing to us in this competitive market. So, we'll be bringing that up at the Infrastructure Committee, and hopefully by the following council meeting coming up, we can present that to Counsel, and you can take it from there.
I really appreciate you championing that. Thank you.
So, we do have a, a infrastructure meeting coming on the, this Thursday at 4:00 at, it would be August 28th, so it's 4:00. I think it's important, since we have these bridge activities and other things going on, that if the public is curious to find out where we're at on a lot of these things that possibly could attend with questions, we can answer any other questions they have. And if we don't have the answer, we'll certainly get it. So, that kind of leads me to the Horse Island Bridge tonight, and I just got a memo from Phil, and I'd like to read it, and it's going to give you some sort of a brief timeline here of why it's important that we start moving on this. The next steps for the Horse Island Bridge, he reports, are to begin the process of preliminary engineering, which includes the historical documentation for this bridge. He'll, I'll put together, he'll, he'll put together a memo together this week to outline the steps required for this historic structure's improvement, as supported by the city and its community, in concurrence with MDOT and the agreement from the State Office of Historical Preservation, known as SHIPO. So, he's going to put this together, but in speaking with his engineering team, which they now have acquired a historical bridge engineer that will help expedite some of these processes, it's, this process between SHIPO and MDOT and the community is about a nine-month process. So, just in that premise alone, that's where we're at with that. So, the, we'll, we'll put together, like I told the mayor, we'll put together Phil's commentaries and that, so that the community can see that, along with the, the very preliminary bridge designs and rehabilitation improvements. There's going to be, I think, five or six options here. So, I don't want anybody in the community getting nervous about we're choosing something over the other. That's far from the case. Nothing has been done. We're assembling this all for the community to partake in, and we'll get that out. Also, I was going to approach Counsel about maybe getting this on a Facebook page in the community, where we can update information for the public as this process starts taking off a little bit more. The other thing is, I'm going to ask Counsel tonight, it's, we have the data for the Young Street Bridge. Councilman Cox and DPW Director John know that we have, we can update the capacity at the Young Street Bridge to the, to the next level. That's going to require probably sign change, et cetera. But I'd like to give the engineer the okay to start that process, so that we could at least move that bridge up to a higher capacity. So, if there's any negative comment on that, I'm going to go ahead and proceed with that to get that in order, so that the residents of that island could at least have a higher capacity to bring different loads across.
Yeah, and I think Treasure Fontaine, obviously, just recall that everybody here was a part of the public hearing, where we gave the community.
Right.
Opportunity to weigh in on that matter, so obviously, we want to make sure we capture that feedback, and we did just that. I don't know if anybody's heard of anything subsequently, but I haven't heard of anything after that hearing.
Well, segmenting from that into my next item would be to ask Counsel to, and again, I don't know if this is a motion thing, or if it's something that, in the Infrastructure Committee, or me as chairman, could just ask Phil to proceed, and that would be to make application for the Young, Young Street Bridge, a grant application for removing that bridge and putting a, the right design bridge in place, so that the islanders could have a full capacity on that bridge. The, the funds right now are, are pretty critical, so it's pretty advantageous if we get on the application list immediately. I was just given an MDOT update that two-thirds of the bridges in, in Michigan exceed their original design life, and 1,000 out of 1,400 in our metro region, out of three counties, have far exceeded that. So, the funds are going to dry up. I think it's important that we get on the application process now and, and get that, so our citizens at least have direction on what's going to happen with that bridge in the future. So, is that okay if I tell him to?
I have, I have no issue with it. Do you see any downside or risk, meaning like financial requirements for the process and/or financial hooks if it were to be awarded?
If it's.
That's the only reaction that comes up right now.
Well, if it, no matter what you're going to do, you're going to have to replace the bridge at some point in time. It, it's unfortunate that we have to go through this with a young bridge like that, but that's just the way it is. There's no recourse for us to go back to MDOT or, or the design engineer at that time. He's non-existent, so, you know, it's, it's in our pocket. The longer we wait, cost goes up. If the, the program remains the same, it'll be a 5% buy-in of the contract costs and whatever engineering fees and, and so on and so forth, we'll have to undertake that 100%. But at least things like that could get budgeted. Right now, we're in an unknown, and if the bridge continues to depreciate in, in capacity or other structural elements, we're going to be, you know, 10 years out before we can do something. a grant application for removing that bridge and putting a, uh, uh, the right-designed bridge in place so that, uh, the islanders could have a full capacity on that bridge. The, the, the funds, uh, right now are, are pretty critical, so it's pretty advantageous if we get on the application list immediately. Uh, I was just, uh, given an MDOT update that two-thirds of the bridges in, in Michigan exceed, uh, their original design life, and thousand out of fourteen-hundred in our metro region out of three counties, uh, have far exceeded that. So, the funds are gonna dry up. Uh, I think it's important that we get on the application process now and, and get that so our citizens at least have direction on what's gonna happen with that bridge in the future. So, is that okay if I, uh, tell him to?
I've, I've no issue with it. Do you see any downside or risk, meaning like, uh, financial requirements for the process and/or financial hooks if it were to be awarded?
Yeah.
That's the only reaction that comes up right now.
Well, if it, no matter what you're gonna do, you're gonna have to replace the bridge at, at some point in time. Uh, it, uh, it's unfortunate that we have to go through this with a young bridge like that, but that's just the way it is. There's no recourse for us to go back to MDOT or our, or the design engineer at that time. He's nonexistent, so, you know, it's, it's in our pocket. The longer we wait, cost goes up. Uh, if the, the program remains the same, it'll be a five percent buy-in of the contract costs and whatever engineering fees and, and so on and so forth, uh, we'll have to undertake that a hundred percent. But at least things like that could get budgeted. Right now, we're in an unknown. And if the bridge continues to, uh, depreciate in, in capacity or other structural elements, we're gonna be, you know, ten years out before we can do something.
You have my support, and I agree. I would say we should be getting ourselves in the line as soon as possible, so. Uh, Council, do you have any objections to that approach? And then going back to your previous one, just Treasurer Fonti, thanks for all the work on this, just to make sure you keep, uh, Chief, uh, in the loop on any of the signage considerations, just from a, a street enforcement officer that he is.
Yeah, and I'd like to just make a public commentary, and that would be, uh, like on the Horse Island Bridge, we had another incursion last week for, uh, an oversized and overloaded truck, and, uh, the residents need to be aware of this when they're ordering, uh, uh, materials into that island. That the, uh, eight, twelve, and, uh, sixteen-ton capacity on that bridge is for real now. It's not a hoax anymore or reason for, uh, keeping, uh, big trucks and heavy trucks off. It's, it's a real deal, so, you know, in the effort of being safe, everybody needs to take knowledge in that. The last thing is that, uh, we've been working with Benesh in our last, uh, meeting, uh, with, uh, water meters, but one of the, uh, subjects that came up is that Wayne County was, uh, inquiring about our detention basin inventory, and we find that's nonexistent. It's not on our, uh, current, uh, stormwater plan that, uh, ADW and, uh, our predecessors have put together in, in the last, uh, two-hundred-page report. So, uh, I think Benesh is a little surprised by that. They're gonna, uh, gonna have to figure all this out. But at least our detention basins and the capacity and that, that they hold, uh, will be addressed, and, uh, and I'll report further when we get some more information on that.
Really appreciate it.
It's a lengthy list.
Yes, it, it's a, it's a big list, and, you know, it's gonna require, uh, you know, eyes on the, boots on the ground to, uh, do a lot of administrative on it, uh, you know, acreage capacity, the depth, the size, the gallons that are being retained, where it's going. All this should've been done in the past, and it's, uh, unfortunately, it's, now it's in our hands to, to make that, and it's gonna be, it's a requirement, so. Which is good, because, uh, we have, I think, uh, by my count, we had somewhere maybe twelve to fifteen or more, uh, detention basins, based on a, a Google aerial, aerial view of what we have in town here right now, so.
Yeah, I remember we brought that, brought that up probably, I don't know, ten, well, probably twelve months ago, we, we talked about, uh,
Storage units. That's, that's the most one.
We were talking about, uh, North Gibraltar Road and West Jefferson there, as the DPW wanted to put all their materials around that, and I'd asked about a permit. Do we file, you know, permit with the county, and got laughed at.
Well, I've, I've highlighted that with Benesh, because I wanna know, uh, I think, uh, in all fairness, we need to know why that retention basin was put in. That's a Wayne County-issue problem with their drainage. Uh, we're, we'll be talking about that, but we need to get smart on, on what's happening there. Uh, we've taken over, uh, you know, that's prime real estate on that corner. Uh, I know it suffered from flooding and everything else, but, uh, you know, that, that drainage was supposed to be heading southbound towards, uh, Frankenpoet and not in our retention basins. Uh, that was created to be pushed uphill through pipe that, uh, isn't designed for forced main usage, so.
Oh, okay. That's backwards.
That's, it's being pumped. That's why the pump's there. It's being pumped through, uh, your average storm drain pipe, and that's not, uh,
Where's it heading?
It's heading probably in your marina.
Oh.
As far as, uh, the details I've picked up on.
So, one more reason why I don't want all the, uh, asphalt millings, uh, right up along the edge of it getting pushed into it and then going out into the water that we, uh, we boat in and swim in.
I mean, that, that water is moving from that corner, what, fifteen-hundred to two-thousand feet down the road?
Irritates me even more that I got laughed at when I brought this up a month, you know, a year ago.
That comes right out in the big bay.
And there's, there's a, you know, I can't find anything right on it, uh, and I've asked, uh, Benesh to get with, uh, our DPW Director and others to find if we have any resolutions, RFPs, or design, uh, calculations on where, how, and how that thing got designed, to what capacity, so on and so forth, and, and, uh, right now, I'm coming up empty. But we'll, we'll get into it a little bit deeper, and we'll get, we'll get the story.
I, uh, just really appreciate all the time and energy you put into this, um, amongst all the other topics you raised tonight.
Extensive.
That's it for me.
Awesome. Any questions for Treasurer Fonti? All right, uh, Finance Director McEwen is not with us this evening. Any questions we wanna raise for Finance Director McEwen when she returns? Without Chief Bullard, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Since the last council meeting, the Police Department responded to ninety-nine calls for service, had eighteen incident reports, one arrest, issued twenty-three traffic citations, and we had four Detective Bureau investigations. Uh, for Gibraltar Police Department news, um, Officer Jones, uh, took his, uh, EMT National Registry, and he passed, and he's now a certified EMT with the Gibraltar Police Department and Fire Department. The Federal Railroad Commission contacted me on eight-seven-two-zero-twenty-five in regards to conditions of the tracks on Middle Gibraltar Road. On eight-eight, they reached out to Canadian National, um, and they have begun minor repairs in Gibraltar Road. Uh, per the Federal Railroad Commission, CN is looking for major repairs at the end of the asphalt season. In other news, the Fire Department is on their fourth week in pace, uh, the scheduling program, and it's going well, very well. Switches in the basement in the server room have been ordered, and they are delivered. ETS plans on installing them this Thursday after hours. Also, actor on systems, the installation of the city building cameras, I, hopefully begin the end of this week or next week. Um, I'd like to congratulate Lieutenant Tim Trush as he completed his bachelor's degree, uh, with clearly university and business administration. That's a huge accomplishment, so, good job for Tim. So, um, I also turned over the city's storm damage costs to Amy on July twen- uh, from July twenty-eighth. Obviously, several city, uh, electronics were damaged, um, and Amy's gonna be submitting a claim to the insurance company. The all-traffic, uh, solutions report, um, Officer Old Danny with the assistance of DPW recently moved the speed sign to a new location, uh, northbound Bayview at Gerald. Um, I'm gonna conduct a four-week study, and I'll bring that back to Council once that, uh, study's complete. They had installed some poles, so we can mount the sign to it.
Appreciate it.
Um, I do have, uh, also included in your packets is the ordinance officer's report. I have three action items. Um, it's kind of a three-parter. Uh, action item A, uh, I budgeted for new pistols for all the police officers of the Gibraltar Police Department with my twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six budget, uh, pending a council approval. Uh, the Police Department current firearms are in need of new parts, including magazines, springs, triggers. Um, it's more effective and cost of, uh, cost-effective to purchase new firearms. The current firearms, uh, carried by our police officers were put into service two thousand and fifteen. Um, I'd like to keep the same caliber weapons so we can utilize the, uh, duty ammo, practice ammo, and limited parts. Uh, we currently have twelve forty-five caliber Glock pistols, two of which are spares. Michigan Police Equipment will also be giving the Gibraltar Police Department, uh, if approved, a store credit for thirty property-room firearms, on the amount of three thousand forty dollars, which will go towards the purchase of the firearm. Uh, it was given Council approval to dispose of the firearms in July twenty-eighth, uh, per Michigan Penal Code Act three-twenty-eight. Uh, the quote "to purchase the property-room firearms" are in your packets. My second action item, um, just for brief discussion, uh, is allowing the police officers within the department to purchase their duty weapons from the city in the amount of, uh, two-hundred-and-eighty dollars each. Um, all ten police officers within the, the department are requesting to purchase their used pistols. Michigan Police, uh, Equipment in Lansing will also purchase the two remaining firearms in the amount of five-hundred-and-sixty dollars, which will also offset the cost of the purchase. Um, requesting a motion to purchase eleven Glock twenty-one Generation Five forty-five caliber pistols with eleven Trigicon and eleven RM-oh-one sights, the six-nine-two-six-four Streamlight, the AmeriGlow night sights for the Gibraltar Police Department for Michigan Police Equipment in the MI deal price of twelve thousand seven-hundred-and-twenty-eight dollars. Now, as far as the two-parter, it'll only be six thousand eight-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars if action item B is approved, which is the, um, uh, the selling of the, uh, twelve pistols that are currently in service.
I appreciate you giving perspective on both, obviously with the interrelationship. City Attorney, do you have any perspective on this matter, just to make sure we're?
Yeah, you have to check with the resale of the firearms to the officers to see if there's an agreement we originally signed when we bought them. Uh, oftentimes, they'll say they're not for resale because we purchased them at a tax-exempt rate. So, if you can dig that up, the original contract for the purchase, they'll give us some guidance on that request.
I really appreciate that. So, so Chief, basically, my perspective would be just make sure that this is conditional on verification of documentation.
Yes, uh, I'd like-
Counsel chooses to approve it.
I'd like to add, uh, that request in my motion that it's conditional.
Conditional on the verification?
On the verification for the, uh, that we're tax-exempt to purchase their firearms in action item B.
And you can work through our city attorney on that to-
Absolutely.
All right, so Council, let's take this one at a time, then I think, um, the first action would be, uh, the request for the purchase, which was in the amount of, so purchasing eleven Glock forty-fives from Michigan Police Equipment in Lansing at the MI deal price of twelve thousand seven-hundred-and-twenty-eight dollars. Is there a motion for that?
I'd make that motion.
Motion by McNabb, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Wood. Council, any discussion on this matter?
I'd just like to say, you know, Bruce, I don't mean anything by this, but, you know, you're paying six hundred and eight dollars per gun, uh, with, uh, credit, and you're gonna pay another hundred and seventy-eight dollars per holster, but you're only selling these guns for two-hundred-and-eighty bucks.
Yeah, it's, it's unfortunate that just, it's, uh, the resale and the, the life of the weapon, they're Generation Fours, and they're ten years old. So.
Uh, any other discussion?
What is the normal duration of time for a service weapon?
I've spoke to Lieutenant Trush about this, and he says ten years, it's addict's max life. So, um, in my action item B, um, obviously, the officers have requested to purchase their weapons, but that's gonna be their responsibility to, you know, fix the firearms. They're just, they're, they're old and out of date. They're Generation Four. The firearms that I'm gonna be purchasing are gonna be a Generation Five.
And, and those, those holsters double as, as, uh, a sight? Is it?
Action, my action item C is to purchase the holsters, which will accommodate the Trigicon sight.
Yeah, okay.
It's a special state-of-the-art, it's a red-dot sight.
Yeah.
And it works well with, uh, but I'll explain that in action item C.
All right, so we got the, this motion, which has been supported, uh, will be for the purchase of eleven. Is there any further discussion on this matter? Clerk Tomasic, we'll have you call it roll whenever you're ready.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Mulner?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Motion carried. Chief, take us to the second one, keeping in mind that conditional, or do you want me to go straight to the motion request? Anything else you'd like to add?
Um, just, yes, Mr. Mayor. Historically, um, when, uh, a duty weapon has been taken out of service, um, the officers have had an opportunity to purchase their weapons. That being said, I'm requesting to sell titty, s- ten city-owned Glock twenty-one Gen Four forty-five caliber duty pistols, um, to the police officers in the amount of twenty-eight-hundred dollars, and this is conditional.
Conditional on the verification of, uh, original contract. Do you, are you good with that wording?
Yeah, it's gonna depend on what the contract states, the original one, but yes.
All right, so then, uh, Council, the motion would be, if you so chose to make it, to, motion to authorize the sale of ten city-owned Glock twenty-ones to ten Gibraltar police officers in the amount of twenty-eight-hundred dollars. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Wood, is there a second for that motion?
Second motion.
Second by McNabb. Uh, Council, any discussions on this matter? I wanna make sure it's conditional on the paperwork, though, just to be clear. Okay. Uh, Katie, do you have that conditional language captured?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion on this matter? All right, Clerk Tomasic, please call roll.
Cox?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Mulner?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Motion carried. Chief, uh, please work with our attorney accordingly.
Thank you. I have one more action item.
Item C is yours.
Thank you. Um, action item C is, um, the Generation Five forty-five Glock pistols require a special holster, um, because they are gonna be affixed with the Trigicon sights. They're a type of aiming device for firearms, uh, known for the use in low light or no light conditions, and they're self-illuminating, uh, titanium lamps. Um, they're widely used for law enforcement, um, military and civilian shooters for both pistols and rifles, rifles. I'm requesting to purchase nine Glock twenty-one Gen Five holsters from U.S. Duty Gear in the amount of one thousand six-hundred-and-three dollars and sixteen cents.
Council, motion's in your court to authorize the purchase of nine Glock forty-five holsters in the amount of sixteen oh-three sixteen.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mulner, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Wood. Any discussion on this matter? Thank you for all the background, Chief. Uh, Clerk Tomasic, please call roll.
McNabb?
Yes.
Mulner?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Motion carried. Back to you.
Thank you. I'm all set.
Uh, just love the opening of the report. Um, congratulations to Officer Jones, uh, to Lieutenant Trush. Just cool to see the progress of our people and the support that you have for developing it, so thank you very much.
Do, we, we have, uh, kids going back to school coming up here pretty soon, right?
September second. So, the school resource officers started today, moving into their, uh, their offices, Officer Sampson and Lieutenant Trush. So, I'm looking forward to the school year.
I, I was thinking about that, uh, uh, the sign that shows the speed limit on, in front of Parsons, and if that's something that we still have the ability to stick out there once in a while.
Absolutely. In four weeks, when the study's conducted, we can put it right in front of the school, 'cause it does drop down to, uh, twenty-five miles an hour during school hours.
A reminder.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
I like it. Um, all right, any questions, further comments for Chief? Uh, Fire Chief Simon is not with us, but Sergeant Shaffer, thank you so much for being here, uh, and the floor is yours, and obviously you have your two additions beyond the listed agenda item.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, the fire report for the seventh to the twentieth of August. The Fire Department responded to fourteen total calls, thirteen EMS. One of those was mutilated from the assistance with Rockwood. We also had one fire call. Uh, as far as department updates go, we had firefighter, uh, Jackson pass her national registry test. She is now a certified EMT. She went through class with Officer Jones. We also had firefighter EMTs, uh, Zooks and Eschleman take their driving test for the fire apparatus. On the state of Michigan, you do not have to have a CDL to operate the trucks, but you do have to have a special driving course to operate those vehicles. So, now they just have to get their drive time and get certified on those.
That's awesome.
And they'll be all set. Also, uh, the city website was updated to incorporate the fire reports that come out monthly. So, any residents that wanna look at that can go on the website and get pictures and graphs to see how the Fire Department response is going, uh, as long as events that we are attending.
Really appreciate that.
Uh, that is it for the updates. As far as action items go, we have two of them. The first being, uh, a motion to approve the attendance of the Fire Department to, sorry, to approve the funds for the EMT class for, um, firefighters, uh, Eschleman and Zooks. They attended the class, uh, last year and got their certifications. Um, there was issues with the college communications to get it processed and paid for, so we're just looking for a motion to approve the payment to Wayne County Community College in the total of twen- twenty-five-hundred-and-ninety-nine dollars for their two, uh, those two to attend the class. They've already attended and passed, but we need to pay the college, so.
Yeah, so, uh, I did a little bit of research with Finance Director McEwen on this one offline as well. Uh, she made some contacts. Uh, Fire Chief Simon had sourced this invoice. It seems like the invoice was the disconnect here and, as a, kind of a bottleneck. Uh, but, uh, I was informed that, and this was something Finance Director McEwen was intimately involved in that, to the summary that you just provided, that this has already been approved by Council. The approval did not accommodate the, uh, specifics, including, uh, firefighters, Eschleman and Zooks in regards to their, um, uh, class. Uh, I do have the check that's been issued by, uh, Amy sitting on my desk, so Treasurer Fonti and I would need to sign it conditional, the approval this evening. And I know I spoke with, uh, our firefighters personally about this, and obviously, I feel important about this, 'cause we need to authorize this. Otherwise, they are exposed financially themselves, meaning they'll have to pay out of pockets, 'cause they have a class they need to be at, I think, as early as tomorrow.
Correct. They start their paramedic program.
Yeah, exactly.
We already approved this?
Correct. It's just the specifics of it that, uh, they're coming back to us with, 'cause this invoice hang up.
Correct, yeah. The invoice needed certain wording on it for the college to accept it, so, and make sure that they, it was paid for those two firefighters.
Make the motion to approve the payment to Wayne County Community College in the amount of-
Twenty-five ninety-nine.
Two thousand five-hundred-and-ninety-nine dollars, uh, for firefighters, Eschleman and Zooks to, as their fall tuition.
Valentine?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?